So I can do, because it's an ordinance, I can do the things that should be reflected in the minutes. We advertised tonight's hearing in the Daily Local News on October 8th, 2024. I have the proof of publication and we also sent a copy of the full ordinance to the Daily Local and to the Chester County Law Library for public inspection. The ordinance has also been available on the borough's website. This came out of the ACT Committee meeting in July. They had suggested that an ad hoc transportation advisory committee be established. The purpose of this ordinance is to actually establish that ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees that you currently have are contained within Chapter Three of the Borough Code, which is your administrative code. So this would add a new Section 3-38 subparagraph U to create the Transportation Advisory Committee. And the ordinance goes through whose, the number of people that are on the committee, what the purpose of the committee is, and some of the procedural rules. We just followed what the ACT Committee came up with as the outline, as well as the, how the ad hoc committees are currently codified within Article Three or Chapter Three of your code. So that's, that's what the ordinance does.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? Okay. Somebody like to call a motion?
Mr. McCoy, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, the ordinance as presented.
I'll second that.
Mr. Matrick, please call the question.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. With that, we will call the Borough Council Meeting to, to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Simone. Next, we have announcements and comments from Borough Council and Mayor. We'll start with Ms. Vicaro.
I want to take tonight to just make a note that our parking department contributes a huge amount to our borough and to our revenue and to the order and organization of our burrowscape. And I want to say a very big thank you to all the work that they do. And I would love if the rest of the community could just make a tiny bit of effort to recognize how much they contribute and how much they are underappreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. So I just want to remind everyone that early voting has begun in Pennsylvania and people can vote at the Government Services Building located off West Town Road. And early voting goes until Monday, November the 4th. The last day to register to vote is October 21st. And the last day to apply for your mail-in ballot is October 29th. And Election Day is November 5th. And polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM Eastern. If you have any questions, please go to Iwillvote.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis.
Yeah, just a quick announcement. We have events coming up. We have Westchester's Homecoming coming up in just a couple of weekends. I believe it's the 26th, so it's over that, yeah? Is it next weekend? Yeah, that's coming up fast. That, and so we should expect to see a lot of activity, a lot of extra people in town. Just FYI. And we also have Halloween coming up. This is the last council meeting or series of meetings we have. So just a PSA, watch out for trick-or-treaters. I think there's designated areas in the borough for, for trick-or-treaters, but I, I know that there's also a map out there that has other houses on next door. So just FYI.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey.
I don't get to go last this time? One, I, I want to echo Ms. Vicaro's comments around the parking department and how hard they are all working to update our parking policies and, and ordinance here in the borough, as well as Public Works and their responsiveness. I know that, you know, anytime that I email Mr. Edwards, he responds mostly within minutes. And if there's something that needs to be done, whether it's a crosswalk or something that needs to be cleaned up, he takes care of it immediately. So just want to acknowledge the, the dedication, commitment and responsiveness of our team here at the borough. And also piggybacking on Mr. Travis, the Halloween Parade is October 23rd at 7:00 PM. And how many years is it, Keith? Yeah, it was around when I was a kid. So I'm pretty sure I was a kid way before you. So I, I look forward to seeing everyone participating in, in that annual event here in the borough. Thank you.
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the borough, the sixth ward. We have a lot going on in that sixth ward. Businesses opening, businesses closing, but there's very little vacancies in the sixth ward business district. I'd like to thank Sterling Pig for the time that we were here in the borough. They've officially closed and a new venue is going to be opening in there. So I'm looking forward to see what's going on. I understand it could be some type of bar or arcade. So it's going to be so exciting to be able to hit golf balls inside or bowling inside or something, whatever they're going to offer us. Tomorrow night, the Downtown Foundation has the Preservation Awards at the Chester County History Center. And that starts at 5:30 to 8:00 PM. And what they do is they give awards to people that have taken their properties and returned them to the original state pretty much when they were built. And they do an excellent job. They give a plaque and some mementos to it. We mentioned the Halloween Parade already, November 5th. Please don't sit on your hands. Get out there and clap and vote. And anyone in the borough that's out there, I don't care whether you're Republican or Democrat or independent, my phone number is 610-701-1809. If you need a ride to the polls, I'm retired. I get up at four o'clock in the morning, polls open, I think at seven. But I do take a nap between two and three every day. So mark your calendars for that. But if you need a ride to the polls, please call me, 610-701-1809.
Thank you. Ms. Simone.
Okay, so I guess a couple of things, a little bit redundant, but yes, November 5th, please get out there and vote, very important. If for some reason you do need to get to the polls between two and three, I got a guy, another guy, that also is looking to help get people to the polls and can, has a car. So as well, similar to Bernie, if, if you need a ride to anywhere, if Bernie's full up, give me a call. I've also got a contact, a volunteer that will happily help make sure that you, you have your opportunity to make your voice heard. One other thing, I just wanted to shout out, we, we had this left on our desk. Bill Mann is the, the star interviewee on, in an article in the State Tech Magazine this month. And, you know, it, it just goes to show, Bill, Bill does a great job. I mean, he keeps our, our, yes, our IT safe, everything, you know, virus-free and all, all that good stuff. And, and we're very lucky to have him on our team. So congrats, Bill, for your, your wisdom and your article that you're featured in.
Thank you. Adam Mayer.
Thank you, President McCoy. I'm going to skip the Halloween Parade since we've gotten that advertisement out. I want to invite everyone to be a part of Westchester's Borough Float. The first time we've done that. In honor of Westchester's 225th birthday this year, we're going to go out with the float. Don Edwards and Don Anderson and Public Works are creating a float for all of us to be on. So I'd like to see all of the council with me on the float, along with any borough employees. And Darryl, I consider you an borough, borough, borough employee because you show up more than most of us put together. So, and, and maybe even you, Bill, if you give us some good publicity. So, but please, 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 this, this will end our celebration this year of our 225th. So come and be a part of the Borough Float and that way we won't have to walk it. But it should be exciting and a first for, for us in the Christmas Parade. And a shout out to Katie Walker and Westchester, Greater Westchester Chamber of Commerce for all the work they're doing to put together yet another stellar parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two things, I wanted to shout out, budget process is generally pretty, pretty dry. But two things I wanted to point out that I thought were, you know, pretty exciting. Number one, the Police Department putting in their budget, which I hope gets approved, a full-time social worker to work with, with constituents. I think that's a huge step forward and I'm really proud that, that the department is doing that. The other thing is that I noticed that the capital projects this year are 47% funded by grants. So that is, that is 53, 47% that's not paid by us, the taxpayers. So I thought that was something worth, worth noting. At that, we will move on. Any comments, petition, suggestions by residents and tenants regarding items that are not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to reports and presentations, starting with presentation from J.M. Tool on the Prose Plan Update.
Evening, everyone. My name is Andy Mears. I'm a landscape architect with JMT. With me is Jake Tierney. Jake is also a landscape architect with our firm. And then our subconsultant is Ann Tool from Tool Recreation and Planning. We work together because we, we think it's important when you're looking at parks, you're not just looking at the physical aspects, but long-term maintenance and everything else. So that's the beauty of our team and why we work together. So just to give you a quick update of what we've been doing over the last several months, we've visited all the parks, we've assessed the parks, we've looked at them, we've met with the Study Committee four times. We've asked them to assess the parks, to look at them, make sure our goals aligned. We were at the Food Festival, the Halloween Parade, the Santa in the Square. We've certainly learned a lot about your community and you have some amazing parks. You do have a different model on how things are maintained and fundraisings and things. And one of your biggest challenges is really one of your greatest assets, and that is the Friends Group. They do an amazing job in raising funds, taking care of the parks. But it, it certainly is a challenge. Well, you know, what happens legacy-wise when, when that's not more? And is there a better sustainable model? So those are some of the things we're going to be looking at. We've looked at, at biking and cycling and connectivity. Connectivity was one of the big things that came up. When you look at the parks, you're, you can walk to all the parks, you can get there. But can you easily navigate them? Is there sidewalks, all of them? Not really. So we're hoping to find out more about that in our public meeting, which is our next step. That is scheduled for November 14th. We met with the Committee today and we're working towards scheduling that. As part of rolling that out, all the information we've gathered to date, we've compiled into a survey and this is the link and you all have access to it. We can go through it if time permits, or you can do that on your own and provide comments. We got comments from the Study Committee today, some very good comments. So we'll be updating that and addressing it. The goal is to have this survey go live at the same time we have the, the public meeting on the 14th. I, I did also put together a quick little infographic on benchmarks that you guys can look at. It really just looks at, the one thing I do want to point out on that infographic is you have 45 acres of parkland total within the borough. And that works out to be 2.3 acres per thousand people. So if you look at what that should be, you, you really should have about 200 acres. So you're, you're a little short on the amount of parkland. So that's really a challenge that we have to come up with and see how. Are there ways that, that we can look at to mitigate that? Is it making better use of parks? Are there vacant lots? Are there other things to do? So we've got some challenges on our end as well to, to try and get to some, some better benchmarks. So like I said, just because you guys got a full agenda, I won't go through all of that. But certainly if you have questions as you're looking at it. But I'll let Ann talk a little bit about the survey because the surveys really some things we need input from, from you as well.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So the survey, it's a lot of fun to do. It's very highly interactive. It's graphic with photos of your great images from all the programming and services that Keith and his department provide. So it's, it's, this survey format is state-of-the-art. Australia used it to plan their Olympics. So we've been getting a very high return on it. We've got almost 5,000 from another county where we did this and counties are hard to get surveys back from. So it, it is highly interactive. There's five screens where we ask people about their experiences, what they like to do, what they would like to do, what's missing, their level of support, their ratings for parks and recreation. And our, our hats really off to Keith and his department that we generated a lot based on the high quality of work that they do. I mean, they generate about 36, 38% of their budget from revenue, outside non-tax revenues, when the national average is about 24%. So we were able to craft the survey to build on your success. So we, we would like you to try out the link, you know, on your own and give us feedback if there's anything that you're, you think is missing or is off-base or you'd like to see added. We would really appreciate your comments. Our goal is to get this out on the street the first week of November. We'll be working with Keith and Ryan and their team to do a very strong promotional program. We're grateful to our committee because our committee members are, have hopped all in in the idea of helping us to promote the survey. So we, I don't want to belabor this with going through every question here. We just wanted to give you a feel for it, that there's five screens, it's highly interactive, it's confidential, we don't track anything. Anybody could say whatever they want to say. One of the beauties of this is if you look at the top, there's a comment bubble. And people could tell us whatever they want to tell us. It's an unusual survey format as opposed to what you're used to, where you just check the boxes. We get a lot of, a lot of really good comments that are very useful. Things we've never thought of, things we, we want to know more about. So that will help us to guide, it will guide the planning process as well. So the, I think the next step is for you all to go through it on your own. It takes less than 10 minutes. We, we monitor that. It's between five and eight minutes that it really takes to go through the whole thing. So if we could get your comments back, then we would finalize it. We have a tech team that looks at everything, grammar, spelling, the time it takes for photos to pop up, everything. So once we get your comments and finalize it, then it goes to a tech team and it'll, it'll be ready for the street in early November. Anybody want to weigh in here on any of this?
Thank you. I mean, I think it's, it's great. The, the statistics you have, the benchmarking is pretty, pretty eye-opening. And do you have some more granular information about it? Like for instance, the, the borough budget being $25 per person. You know, what, on nationwide, what are those things? Where, where do the dollars go? Like to buildings, to maintenance, to?
Oh, it goes for the provision of parks and recreation services, which include maintenance. It's all your operations, yes. That's why we mentioned Keith doing a great job of like generating 36 or 38% compared to 24% of what a typical parks and recreation department. So you get a lot for, for, when you look at those benchmarks, you're, you're getting a lot. We're, we're hoping to build the case for more support.
And I just wanted to add, they've been doing a wonderful job. We've had about four, four meetings already and they really have just brought everything together and have been doing a great job. Secondly, it was eye-opening today, seeing those statistics and knowing that a one-man team of Keith has brought in 36%, whereas the national average is 24%. And yet, the, the average is, in Pennsylvania, I think it's $42 per person spent on parks and recreation. And we're spending $25 in Westchester. So you're getting, you know, you're getting your money's worth.
And, and to build on what you said, Mayor, is that this, he, he has it now, as of yesterday, a two-person department plus the maintenance budget. But the, with your population, you're in an urban community, should have 16 people working full-time in parks and recreation. And, and it, those numbers go, tend to skew higher for more densely populated communities like yours. So there, that really defines how much you're getting for the benchmarks that we're showing.
And we have to remember that you are a borough that is a lot different than a lot of places. You have your own uniquenesses and one of them is that, you know, Keith does a spectacular job with what we would call in the profession, programming. But the programming here is really more about special events. And your special events, I can tell you, we've been to some of them, is they're amazing. You know, we don't work in a lot of communities that have that many events and that big of events. They usually have one or two, or maybe one signature event. I mean, every time I come here, there's another event, you know, scheduled for the next month. So that's something that's very unique. But on the flip side of that, you don't have park playground programs and things like that. So that's, our next step is to try and dive into some of those things and, and try and see what makes sense here.
Yeah, so every dollar that you put into parks and recreation is really not a cost. It's an investment. That we've done economic studies in other communities where we found in, a recent example was in a concert series, for every dollar that the municipality put into having the concert series, another $26 in economic benefit went to, through restaurants for what people ate before, during and after a concert. And in our interview, follow-up interviews on the economics of that, we found that the summer concert series was actually the, the, the benchmark for whether they had a profitable year or not. So there's all, all of the economic benefits from your investment in parks and recreation that we want the plan to support.
Now, I, I just want to point out, there, there is actually also economic benefits. People that live by parks, their home values tend to increase. So I think this is a, a good first start in investment.
Are you aware that we have a fee in lieu in the borough?
Yes.
And Keith gets funding through that, that agency?
Yes.
Like for example, once they develop the, the one property that's contaminated the other end of town, if my memory is correct, which most of the time it's not, my wife tells me that, I think it's like $400,000, Sean? Yes. Look at that. I hit the ball straight today. So it's $400,000 that Keith will, will see. They're coming in, plus all the new buildings that we have going up in the borough. And to, to your point of 16 people in the department, there are 33 people in that department, so you know. And they're called Public Works because Keith is the head of that, of Parks and Recreation. And Mr. Anderson and Mr. Edwards and everybody in that Public Works Department chips in to make sure that, you know, things are done in our parks. And they, and if there's something wrong or something goes astray in our parks, it's amazing how fast the Public Works team jumps in there, corrects it almost immediately, if not sooner than that. So.
Your parks always look nice.
Yeah, so it's, and that's Keith's direction to our Public Works team, of Mr. Anderson and Mr. Edwards down there, so.
Very good. Yeah, it shows.
Any other comments, Council?
I just want to make sure I understand, where are we posting this survey? So that those that don't have an opportunity to get to the, the meetings or the, you know, then we can share it out a little bit better? Where's this survey going to be available?
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
It's got that today in the State Department meeting. And the main goal behind this is when all is said and done, the objective is when we present the final product to the council, I don't want anyone to say they didn't have an opportunity to be involved. The grocery stores, churches, parks, using our areas, using, using every possibility that we have, I would get this word out. And that's going to be a real push for the next two weeks.
Okay, and so, make, yeah, so, because I can send the link. I have a group in the fourth ward and things like that. And I just want to make sure, yeah.
We'll be using the chamber, the bin, the wine, the metal center. We're going to be using anywhere possible, we can get it out to larger groups and make it happen.
We're, we're also going to have a couple follow-up focus group meetings because we know, and it was, it came out of our meeting today with the Study Committee, that there may be some groups that may not come out to the meeting. So we may go to, to them for one or two meetings. But we'll wait and see what happens at the public meeting.
Maybe a get out the vote campaign with the, the greeters outside of the voting. After you vote inside, vote for your parks outside. Get us some little handouts.
Point, Ms. Simone, the, if Keith, I don't know how many, Mr. McGinnis probably knows, but how many polling places we have in the borough? I think we have, what, seven? Seven or eight? It'd be nice to have a nice banner there, each place, sitting outside on like a tripod or something for people coming up to parks, talking about parks and recreation. Because most of the people in Borough Council will, you know, work their polls and will be more inclined to talk to people walking up. By the way, you know, after they vote, here's, here's what we're doing. Yeah.
That's a really great idea. We just did that in another municipality.
You know, I don't have very many people tell me I did that. Darryl's, Darryl's the only one, so you know.
Well, that was a good one. We did that in another community, a really small kind of rural community. And we've gotten hundreds of responses just because of handing them out at the voting location. So we'll, we'll make some, we'll do business cards that could be handed out. So we'd need some help figuring out, well, Keith, we'd work with Keith to figure out how to get them to the, how many voting places do you have?
Eight. Eight.
Oh, for your wards?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we'll figure it out. But that's, that's a really great idea.
All right, anything else, anyone?
Did you mention the public meeting? No, November 14th anticipated.
Yep, yep. Public meeting, 5:30 to, to 7:00. And we will have that here at this.
I am curious, what, what will be the next step after you receive all the survey results and crunch all the numbers? Like what will happen after, like when, when you get the data back? What, what will be the next, will it be a public meeting or will you come here? Just curious to see what the follow-up is.
So once we have the public meeting, we'll summarize the results of the public meeting. And then we will also summarize the results of the survey. We'll take those two pieces of information and use that, as well as all the work we've done to date, and craft our recommendations. At the bottom of that infographic are just some of the key words and things we know we have to, to address in this plan. This is going to be a unique plan because you have some unique set of circumstances here. You're not a traditional borough or traditional municipality. So you have some, some unique issues that we need to address. So these are just some of them, but we'll keep building on those to make sure that the survey and the public meeting, what people want and what their needs are, we're using that to inform the plan to make. the plan to make sure we address those needs.
So that public meeting, you're gonna have the results from the survey, the one that we're talking about for November? Okay. I didn't think so. It would be a follow-up.
Yeah, following meeting.
Okay. Just curious, like, time-ish-wise?
So we are looking at November for the public meeting, and then January for our fifth meeting with the Study Committee, and we will have our recommendations to the Study Committee at that time. And then hopefully, in March, we will have a draft plan, is the goal.
So when you go through this, in response to your, what do I get out of this, is that you'll see a question in there, what park do you live closest to? We're gonna do tabulations based on that answer. So every, anybody that lives by Marshall Square or John O'Green, we would say, this is what these respondents, this is what matters to them. So we're really drilling down into this. We heard that was important to everyone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great update. Okay, we're gonna move on to old business. We had a discussion last night about the Hoops Park Racket Center bid, and I think, I don't know if we want to have any further discussion. I think that was resolved sort of offline. If somebody wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to move this to the consent agenda. Nate Klein, as well, as our solicitor, did confirm the bid. The bid is correct. We're good. And I'm comfortable with that.
I'll second that.
All right, so we'll move that to consent, or should we make a separate motion? Okay.
No, I mean, I'm fine with that. I think it makes sense. We're good.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're gonna discuss the Mayor's request for corporal promotion of Officer Andrew Hill. I don't know if you wanted to say, make any comments about it prior, or do we just have a, someone would like to make a motion?
I can make the same comments I did yesterday. We had a corporal leave us at the end of June of this year, Corporal O'Neal, I believe. And so it was, we had another position to fill for corporal, and with one thing or the other, it didn't, we weren't able to interview until this week, which I was able to do, and select a corporal, select a person I'd like to fill this position of corporal, and that would be Officer Andrew Hill. He's been a officer here for about seven years now, and his resume is stellar, and I'll be happy to share it with anyone who would feel that they just want to know more or see more. But he's a good officer. Fortunately, you know, we had three good candidates, and but he's the one I chose to be the best.
Okay, thank you.
Question for the mayor. Mayor, are we at full complement now with the Police Department? Or as the corporal moves up, is there someone in line to do the day-to-day ranks, or are we at full complement?
I believe we're full, or if we're not full, we're at 43. We're down two. Are we down two? Because one is out. I know one is out sick, well, not sick, but injured. So, down two. So we will be, yes, we're, I know we're down at least one, because one position I did not fill out of the candidates from the last list. So we will, we retired that list, and we will probably be having another civil service exam either December or January.
Mr. McCoy, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint the Mayor's recommendation for Corporal Hill.
I'll second.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimonie?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the October 16, 2024 consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as stated.
I second that.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimonie?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other business? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 7:07. Thank you.